We can't discuss things in a consent decree.
While we're pulling it.
Yeah, okay, you're pulling it now.
So I guess.
Okay, let's put it, let's put it twelve, twelve eleven, that way?
Sure.
Okay. Yes, mail. And one thing, hang on, let me make sure the notes are right.
And, uh.
Twelve eleven.
Ms. Shelley wants to know where you're putting them, just what?
I put the twelve two to twelve eleven, but, and then twelve ten to twelve twelve, would that work?
Yeah.
That make sense everybody? Okay.
Yeah.
Because I confused myself for a second. Okay. Is that, are we good, is that all?
That's all I have.
Anybody else? Okay. So I need a movement on the amended agenda.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Payton, taken by Dr. Bridges. All right, number three, approval minutes.
Move.
Moved by Dr. Bridges.
I'll second.
Taken by Ms. Bearbrun. Let's vote. Oh, we didn't, we didn't vote on the agenda, I just realized that. Let's vote on the agenda first. Got five votes, and then approval of the minutes, let's vote on that. Five votes. Florida. Four financials.
Move, take this up.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Bridges, taken by Mr. Payton.
My only question is, I got lost in the numbers, I couldn't find, and I'm not saying it's not there, I couldn't find attorney fees for last month, which is gonna help me.
All the financials?
Isn't it, wouldn't it be in there?
Yeah.
I just couldn't find it.
Well, I didn't see it.
Yeah, just paid me for last month.
Oh, hang on, let me scroll.
The attorney card.
Do you have anybody, would you happen to know Malaysia, what it would be under?
For March, it could be March.
That's on this one, the one for March.
Can we, can we, can I just see their month? I couldn't find, I looked, somebody just pulled it up real quick.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to look through.
She did a special.
If I give a talk.
Yeah, we did a special agenda for today. It's, it's not on here, because I was out and everything when I came back.
No problem.
She put, I can give you the amount.
Yeah, you can get that.
Yeah, for me.
I could, I could do that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
You want to wait a second?
We can go, we can go.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I can see the amount.
Okay. All right, so, I'm sorry, did we move on financials?
We did.
We did, okay, so we're just voting now, I'm sorry. Let's vote on financials.
I vote nay.
So four yeas, one nay. Did you get that, the vote? You got, you got the, okay, okay. All right, now four a, the attorney's fees.
Yes. I asked Mr. Barron for comprehensive list he provided to me in February. Our attorney, as we, as we went into the contract, sat here and said that he would keep our fees at $2,000 a month. June 2024 was $2,448.16. July 24, $2,698.16. Sixteen gets redundant, it sounds like it's giving repetitive, always 2024, $2,916.91. September 2024, $2,979.41. October 28, and I have it listed here, if you all want to see it, $2,856.66. November was $3,198.16. December was $3,292.16. January was $3,323.41. He is not, uh, keeping this end of the contract, and I think we should release him, uh, because of that. He promised that he would keep us at $2,000 a month, and if he didn't bill all these hours at $125 an hour, and has no report of litigation, only thing he should be billing as far as litigation, he has not reported one time to this board any type of litigation he's been involved in. So why are we being charged all these sums of money? So I moved to just missing.
Um, did, I'm just, didn't we, it was like, it was two thousand, but we knew with the consent decree and all that, like if he was working on that, wasn't that in the understanding?
It was in the understanding.
Okay, I, I thought so.
But he has not reported once about any consent decree being contacted by Ms. Bellway or anybody. He has not reported back of any litigation, but we keep getting deals for such. And that was not the agreement, and I know we have two members that was not part of that. We have two retired members that, that heard his, that heard his deal.
Right.
I know he's worked on the consent decree, uh, with, now, that, he has not reported to this board, he has worked on it according to his invoices, uh, he's worked with me on some of that stuff. So I'm thinking there's some, uh, some information in the invoices that he's worked on, but we might need to look at him providing that information to the board, so you'll be aware of it.
I think he's being untruthful. I just, I, I think he's being untruthful, I think he's being manipulated, and, uh, I don't want, I don't want him around.
Do we, um, can we discuss with him, like what the charges are, and stuff?
If you, if you like, I mean, he has, he has a description, and I printed, I, I didn't have the paper to print for him, but he has a description of what he's been doing, but he has not reported not once since he's been here to the board.
I'm gonna pass it on now since they.
Concerning litigation at $125 an hour. But sure, you're welcome to talk to me.
Yeah, I mean, I just would, you know, before dismiss, if I'm out, I'd like to discuss it with him.
I haven't heard from him, I don't know if he's over here tonight or not.
Okay.
No, he, he doesn't, I put enough description.
Okay, so here's a, uh, Dr. Bridges had the motion to, we're thinking, can we just break our contract? Okay?
This is right to work state, we tell a lot of people in this district, this is a right to work state.
It is, it is, I knew that, it is a right to work state.
We could tell him the same thing.
Right. Okay, well, um, there's a motion by Dr. Bridges to release the board attorney, but.
When is the, when is the contract, uh?
Uh, I, I wasn't here when the contract was negotiated, I'm assuming it's a year contract, or is it, uh, ongoing until permanent? I don't know.
I don't remember.
And we just received $3,479, it can't be that much consent decree going on, and we're not privy to the information.
Right.
$3,400 last month, and I haven't heard a word about the consent decree. And my father's name is on the consent decree, I believe, or some of my relatives' names is on the consent decree, I haven't heard a word from this attorney.
Yeah, because, yeah, it sounds like for this one, it says half hundred forty finance with superintendent, NBE representative attorney J. O., in reference to confidential personnel matter. And then, and then conference with the DOJ in reference to information reported in consent decree.
Why we haven't been, why we haven't been included?
I know he's talked to me about, um, that he had talked to the, you know, just like that he, that he was talking to BLM about everything, but nothing in detail or anything like that.
Can we discuss it maybe in executive session?
Why?
Well, he, I mean, he works for the board and.
Personnel ma, it's probably a personnel matter.
It's not, he works for the board, he doesn't work for the district.
Works for the board.
Even if we, I mean, there's a motion.
He's wondering where his tax dollars are going, he always trying to hide it in the executive session.
Well, there's a motion, so I'm just waiting.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I like discussing with him, when he's present.
That's what I would recommend, because he may have.
So he can explain us about this.
That would be the opportunity to get those answers.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, um, so there, we're just waiting on a second.
So we die.
It's, it's no second. But we, I'm, I'm totally okay with discussing it with him, for sure, though.
Yeah.
All right, number five, presentation of school data at TSI report by Ms. Thomas.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Okay, we'll start with the ATSI report. Reporting for the month of March. Third benchmark data, we actually gonna cover it in the presentation, so if you don't mind, except being redundant, we are gonna go over it in presentation. Um, in March, I told enrollment was 187, our students' ADA was 91.5. Students who were absent for the month, um, was 30%, we're glad to see the number down a little bit. Teachers attendance was 92%, and the number of disroom referrals were five. I'll be there this month.
Okay.
All right, so in front of you, in case I knew we may have some problems, so I tried to, uh, take the innovative report, um, approach and give it to you and, right in front of you, you have a PowerPoint in front of you. So in this PowerPoint.
Okay.
He's, he's up there.
Does the board work, anyone know if this is board work? Does the board work?
This Amy wants to see.
I can hit the power button, I'm just saying.
It's not gonna be on that board, though.
Okay, it's not gonna be on that board.
Okay.
Is that all right with you all?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, Ryan Page Middle School, 24-25 school year data. In this presentation, we're going to, um, I don't know if the board gonna keep up with me, or we gonna move on if you all don't mind? Just trying to get to the senior, uh, page. So in this report, um, presentation, we're gonna reflect at where we were, our current situation, our work plan, key components, and then expectations and aspirations. In spring of 24, I mapped data. Go up that.
There we go.
Okay, there we go. So in ELA, our proficiency was 39.8%, growth overall, 56.7%, growth of the bottom 25, 52.1%. Math proficiency was 66.9%, growth overall, 82.9%, growth of the bottom 25, 70.5%. Science, this is just including our proficient advanced students, was 72.2%. We had a total points of last year 441.1, which was nine tenths from a A. As we pause and reflect at our current situation, how close are we now? Okay. So right now, we are 32 points away from being an A according to our third benchmarked, um, data. This is the calculations in which I actually, uh, calculated. In ELA, we had 40% proficiency, growth overall, we are 56.2, growth of the bottom 25, 56.6. In math, we 62.63%, growth overall is 77.95%, and growth of the bottom 25 is 57.83%. Our science is 60.7%. So as we look and go forward, if you're like at me, you're looking at this data, you're saying, oh, this growth overall needs to increase. So as we reflect plan and learn and, learn to apply what we've learned, this is our focus going forward. We're looking at growing our students with disabilities, that's our L students 504 and students with IEP. That is the reason why we are ATSI school, so we're focusing on growing those students. We also focusing on growing our bottom 25, because across, um, our ELA and math, we're struggling with our bottom 25 students. Sometimes you may hear referred to LPS students. We're also looking at growing our 3A and 3B, where you are, when a student receives a 3A to 3B, that's kind of saying you average, and they get very comfortable with that. So we try to push them, that's why we can see the next thing, is that's keeping our students motivated and not stressed, especially our eighth graders. Student attendance is very important, so we're trying to focus on that and we're literally trying to reward them for coming to school. Motivate and appreciate our teachers as well. When we look at our work plan for the next two weeks. You're gonna see why I say these things, you're gonna see our work plan. Continue teaching and reviewing. We're going to motivate those students and remove some of that stress. We're gonna have an Easter egg hunt for our teachers at twelve on Wednesday and for our students at one fifteen. We're gonna continue with ISG, which is, if you all don't know, that's high school wide intervention plan. Where the first hour fifteen minutes of school, actually now is hour thirty minutes of school, we're doing small group intervention. We're actually meeting our students where they are. We have two teachers in the classroom teaching them. They also have small group, um, where they're doing peer grouping and then they have technology group. We've analyzed the data and we discovered their strengths and weaknesses and that's how we place them in the groups. Knowing that our students who are still at level five, they're weak somewhere, so they're not staying in the same groups. They are changing. As we continue to go on to literally close those learning gaps. On April twenty-second through the twenty-fifth, we have an ELA boot camp where Harvard Educational Consultants is coming in to work with our students as well as our teachers. For those last minute things that we need to get covered. Also that week, we have in our, um, grade level reviews, we're gonna include games, we're gonna include out of the box learning. We're gonna put up those laptops and we're gonna actually do things with our hands and get them moving in the, within the school, all over the school. So you may think it's chaotic, but it is creative chaos and it is conducted, conducive, uh, chaos. Also that week, we're doing a lot. We're doing Spirit Week, which includes fun and relaxation. So every day, there is a theme, so if you come there seeing us with our shades and our hoodies on our head, it's intentional. Our boots on the ground, it's intentional. And if you come on Friday, we having a half a day day party. So you're gonna see them dancing and you're gonna see them having fun. So we gonna party before we get these results, cause we believe in that we gonna get this A. On that Monday following, we having our test prep rally for our sixth and seventh graders and then we're having it on Tuesday for our eighth graders. Our testing schedule, as you can see, this is our testing schedule. It's something new. What you just saw, okay. It's something new. Um, normally, it takes us about six weeks to do testing. We're gonna try to do it in six days, so please pass the word. If you are a Rod Page student, I need you there those six days. So we can get the test done and over with. I think they're truly appreciated. Again, we're gonna have fun those days, those who are not testing. Key components to our success. As you can see, it's everyone. As he continued to click, you see pictures of. Different people coming in and that's our teacher of the year this year. This is students who are doing out of the box learning, where they actually going in and it's not. You sitting with paper and pencils, you putting your hands into it and learning, doing fun activities. Also, after this slide. You see, that's our consultant. Key components team, that's, that is our theme this year. Together, everyone achieves more. And the, the key components is everyone. We need everyone, the community, the parents, the teachers, the students. Everyone is gonna help us achieve this big. Goal that we have. All right. It's a big goal. We are trying to make history at Rod Page. We want to be that A school. So when we look at proficiency, our goal is forty-five percent proficiency. We are five points away. ELA, growth overall, we're four points away. Our goal is sixty percent. We're four points away. Bottom twenty-five, our goal is sixty percent. We are four points away. You all, I, as you saw earlier, IELA scores were really down. We focused a lot on it this year. And they are doing so well. Until now, we gotta really motivate our math teachers because they did so great to continue to do the great job they're doing. And math, our goal is sixty-eight percent. We are six points away and, uh, for proficiency. Growth overall, eighty-five percent, we're eight points away. Growth of the bottom twenty-five, seventy-two percent, we're ten points away. And for science, seventy-five percent, as you saw, with seventy-two point two percent, you all, that is seventy-five percent of our students being at proficiency or advanced. That's awesome. And we are fifteen points away. To give us, hopefully, praying real hard, we get this A. Four hundred sixty-six points, which right now we're fifty-six points away. I just wanna tell you all, when we get it, we inviting y'all to celebrate, participate, put your money ready, we coming. Y'all already got your plan, eleven thousand dollars, we need to get it. So we need you all to support us and get those babies there.
All right.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much. All right, next, M E S store.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I do apologize that I do have my flash drive, but I didn't get it to Mr. Dawson in time, so. I got. And I'm sorry, I apologize for that. But at M E S, we are actually elated to be able to get up and talk to you all about. Where we are, where we been and what we're doing today. Um. First of all, I wanna, um, introduce myself. I am the principal at M E S and Dr. Natisha Hayes is here with us to represent. As well, you can lift your hand, so they can know. Uh, M E S, right now, we have an enrollment of three hundred and eighty-two. Our daily attendance is ninety-four point twenty. And we are looking forward, we do not have, um, too many tardies, but we're working on tardies. Uh, we're trying to work together with the parents to make sure they get the children there on time so that we can, they won't miss instructional time. Our discipline is down to five per month and most of those are bus disciplines. So with being young, we are trying to encourage and teach the young people that the same policies that they have at school is also expected on the bus. But that has went down tremendously. Our third grade I Ready data for, um, M E S has truly improved. Now, we should, I could have shown you guys, but. I'm very encouraged with where our data is, with our tier one, tier two. For our third grade, we started out with our. Tier one on a, of twenty-eight students that were tier one and we ended up at the end of the year. With those to thirty-three in the third grade. We are working hard for those to get those, the reading up. The math went from seven proficiency to forty-nine. So we were very, uh, encouraged with how that was developing. Our fourth grade I Ready data started from, moved from fourteen being into in proficiency to twenty-four. Our math went from sixteen to forty-three of proficiency. Uh, we are working with our tier program with our teachers. This has, it has really been a challenge. To get the small group started back within the classrooms and the centers. But we are getting on board. Uh, this is something that we really need to happen and it has been. Um, a check transition in our culture to make that happen, but it's working. And we can see the development of it and the growth of it. Fifth grade I Ready reading started with our proficiency, went from twenty-two at beginning of the year to thirty-six. We are improving slowly, but we are improving with our math from twelve proficiency to thirty. In our, with our fifth grade I Ready. Now with our benchmarks, we improved by, um, with the comparison of benchmark one, two, and three. Um, you can see that how they develop only with our science, how we continue to pursue a way of how to make a change in that. We have received consultants this year that have come in and trained our teachers to show them a different way of how they can reach and engage all of the students. But with our math results, um, last year, we ended with a point system of, um. Uh, ELA was forty-four percent proficiency, math twenty-four point seven, and science was forty-nine point one last year. Our overall growth of ELA was fifty-four point two, our math was nineteen point three. And our bottom twenty-five percent of ELA was thirty-six point three and our math was twenty-five point nine, which gave us a score. Of two hundred and fifty-four, which is an L. And that's where we ended, um, and that's where we began from the beginning of the year. And we came in working with our benchmarks. We took our first one to see where our students were at the beginning of the year. That we may have a plan to come in and to intervene with the children that, uh, were struggling. And we begin to see a growth. With our second benchmark, our ELA went to twenty-nine percent point nine. Math, um, proficiency went to twenty-three point nine and our science thirty-five point one. Uh, overall growth was forty-seven point two with math as well as with ELA and our math was twenty-eight point seven. Bottom, growth of the bottom twenty-five tremendously have grown from, to fifty-nine point five percent with ELA. Um, our math is forty-six point six. So we moved by the second benchmark to two hundred and seventy points point nine one, which brought us to a D. After the second benchmark. The third benchmark, we have moved, uh, with, uh, I would, I'm gonna say them all for everyone. I don't wanna hold you long. But ELA proficiency went to thirty-six point six, math twenty-five point one, and science went up to forty-four point six. This is this, uh, third benchmark that we just received scores from. Um. Our overall growth of ELA was forty-eight point two, our math was forty-one point four overall growth. Our bottom twenty-five of ELA went to fifty point nine and our math is thirty-eight point four. Which brought us to a total point of two hundred and eighty-five point two, which is a D. But we are forty-three points from a C. Um, and this is my counting. I, I will see where we have a couple more points that we can add to that. Um, which will bring us up maybe to two eighty-five, eighty-seven, but we are on the move. And we have great expectations that we will continue to move these children because these are the same children that was a B. And we believe in them. We know that they can accomplish that again. So our goals of moving forward and our focus area is implementing MTSS. So that all students will receive tier two interventions through I Ready with an elective schedule. And our desire is to reach a sixty-two percent proficiency in all subject areas. And, um, and that our teachers will pull small groups three times a week for thirty minutes for intensive interventions. We want to and we are there creating a structure of procedures, safe climate, and a culture of high expectations. You know, just an example, we are expecting that our teachers will know that we do care about them. We give, um, our awards to our teachers that get a twenty-five dollar award every nine weeks to the highest data. And we recognize our teacher of the month every month and, uh, we give them daily affirmations of what good work and how proud of them we are and thankful for what they're doing. We have faculty meetings once a month. We have PLCs by week, uh, twice a month. As well, we want to improve instructional practices. In order to do that, you have to inspect what you expect. So we will be monitoring the non-negotiables, for example, making sure instruction is going forward, implementing, uh, centers in subject areas. Making sure that there are classroom rooms, work, the student's work is displayed. And we are conducting PDs for classroom management, MTSS technology and centers. And mon- monitoring our lesson plans as well as MTSS. We are, we are very motivated to increase parental engagement and community involvement. We just recently had, um, red carpet celebration, help rally for our students. Where we, you can see on the last page where our superintendent came. And he did some very encouraging things with the students. They had a ball, they enjoyed it, they loved it. And we also did on the walls of the hallway where parents could come in and sign little notes to encourage the students. Because we've already started our testing. We actually will get into our math, uh, state testing tomorrow. We had our ELA. And so we are very adamant. Today, we had, uh, bunny rabbit pictures as well as Easter egg hunt. With our students and parents are very, help, are very invited to that. We're looking forward to awards day. And class days where we are inviting the parents to come in and be involved. And in the back, there's pictures of where the parents, as well as, uh, that is a, a copy of our red carpet day that we had there. And M E S, we, our motto this year is M E S stars, which means study, try, achieve, recognize, and succeed. We believe in our students and we know that they are stars. They've already proven that. And we're gonna do our very best to take them back to where they belong, the status that they already have. Any questions or for me?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Keller, you're up.
On the first page of the, uh, head up, if you have here, up at the top are our scores from last year on the state test. We had forty-three point five percent proficiency in ELA, uh, forty-five point two percent growth of all, thirty percent growth of the bottom twenty-five. Math forty-nine point two percent proficiency, fifty-two point eight percent growth of all and fifty-one point two percent growth of the bottom twenty-five. And then in science, we had fifty-seven point one percent proficiency. And then up under there are the goals that I've set this year just schoolwide, forty-eight point five percent proficiency in ELA. Sixty percent growth of all in ELA and sixty percent growth of the bottom twenty-five percent. Then in math, fifty-five percent proficiency, seventy percent growth of all, sixty percent growth of bottom twenty-five percent. And sixty-five, uh, percent proficiency on the science. Then if you turn to the last page, we'll just go over the third benchmark data. I've got the data for each benchmark on there, but the last one, we, we just took, we had fifty-one point eight four percent proficiency in ELA. Fifty-six point six three percent growth overall and fifty-seven point six percent growth of the bottom twenty-five percent. Then we had thirty-seven point five percent proficiency in math, forty-four point two nine percent growth of all, forty-one point four seven percent growth of the bottom twenty-five. And then in science, we had sixty-five percent proficiency. So, uh, just kinda referring back to the goals. On ELA, on the last benchmark, we're right on track with goals that we set. Science, right on track. Math, uh, kinda been a little bit lower this year. We've been working through that some throughout the school year. Uh, things that we've done after each benchmark, I've had data meetings with each of the teachers. And we've discussed, uh, where the scores were. We looked at students who were, you know, just a few points away from maybe being a five or a few points away from being a four. Uh, those students that were a few points away from reaching to the next level and showing growth. And discussed, you know, what we can do to help those students. Uh, teachers have given me plans of, of what they're doing in the classroom to be able to address the needs of those students. They've been taking the uh, results of the test after each one's been given. And working with the students to help them understand what they missed and why they missed it, uh, to help them to be able to grow. Uh, we've also focused on vocabulary a lot. Uh, because a lot of times this would trip students up on the, the state test especially maybe. There's some words that I don't understand, so we're focusing on that as well. Students in the classroom too, they've been tracking their data and keeping up with it on each benchmark. Uh, and setting goals for themselves of where they want to get to and uh, where they want to be. Um, and then also uh. It's been a couple of years since we had Master Connect, we had ELS last year. But we had Master Connect for a few years then. And I know at that time, we had consistently scored ninety points higher on the test, the state test than what we did on the third benchmark. I don't know for sure that's what happened this time, but I feel confident that the score will be higher on the state test than what it was at the third benchmark right now. We're a little over twenty points away from being a B, but I feel very confident that we'll get back to being a D. Uh, once we get the results in from that state test. Any questions?
So you're using the ELS benchmark district-wide now, is that what I heard?
Last year.
Okay.
Alright, Ms. James.
Alright, first piece of data that I'm gonna go over will be the ATS I. And I promise y'all we're not holding you long on these. Um, seems like I've heard everything, I think every school is doing the same thing just about. Um, so with our ATS I, we have a letter grade of A C. So our last benchmark uh, data, you see in front of you, we have about, um, we have thirty-six percent reading proficiency. We have a forty-eight percent growth of all in reading. Um, we have a thirty-six percent growth of the bottom twenty-five. And in math, we have thirty-five percent proficient, forty-six percent growth of all. And we have forty-one percent that is the bottom twenty-five. For our science, I had, I calculated sixty-nine percent, me and Ms. Madison, we were trying to find, she was trying to find my little point. Um, so we had sixty-nine, I got sixty-nine, sixty-nine percent proficiency on that. And for us, our total enrollment, we have two hundred and fifty-eight, we've lost a couple of students. Our student ADA is at ninety-three point ninety-one. The percentage of students who are chronically absent, two or more absences is at forty-two percent. Um, teacher attendance rate is at ninety-five point eighty-eight percent and the number of disciplinary referrals are five. I heard everybody saying there's a five this month, don't know what's going on. So our allocation, the remaining funds that we have for FY twenty-five for benchmark three is fifty-one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. Our FY twenty-four remaining balance is twenty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-five cents. And our FY twenty-three money, we have spun it all down to three dollars. So we have gotten rid of FY twenty-three money. Now for the data presentation, as always, we believe that at the center, we are prowling for excellence. And at this time, it is uh, test-taking time. So nerves are everywhere, from the students down to the teachers and to the administrators. We're a ball of nerves every day while they're testing. So our strength, we were able to send our kindergarten teachers and first grade teachers to Ames Pathway this year. Ames Pathway is almost, is just as hard as a college course, um, for science and reasoning. So the only way you know to get your teachers, your kindergarten teachers, because they're the ones that's teaching the very foundation of learning. You've gotta give them some extra help and knowledge. So the state department come out with Ames Pathway. And if they do not pass this um, course, it's, it'll cost a difference of fifty, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So all of my teachers went and they passed, and yes, it was very, very hard for them. Um, I took the course, but um, they learned a lot of knowledge that has helped them. Um, especially teaching kindergarten and first grade students those basic sounds. And what students are hearing when they're at home versus what they're hearing at school. So they, they really enjoyed the class, yes, it was again, very strenuous and time-consuming for them because you have to take a test at the end. So it was just like going back all over again and just being taught those things, those skills. Um, that sometimes we forget in our daily routine of teaching. So they definitely, all of my teachers now, K through second grade, first grade, have um, received those activities. Um, and I'm very, very thankful for that. Our academic boot camps, we're having throughout the campus. Um, we have students that stay over school, we have after-school tutorial. That, that our fifth, sixth graders and our fourth graders, because you're gonna see those scores. They're lower in those classrooms, in those grades, the fourth grade and some of the fifth and sixth grade scores are a little lower. So we're having after-school tutorial for those particular students. And they have definitely been coming, I'm very shocked because normally in the past, they had not been coming. But here this year, they really, we've had about twenty or more every day to participate in the program, after-school tutorial. We're using Can U, we're using the Excellence Group and Kirkland Consultants. So those groups are coming in and they're working with teachers and students. Um, Can U, we, of course, we battle against each school, which Topeka and Rod Page, um, in math competitions. So those students definitely enjoy having competitions with each school. With the Excellence Group, we have one coming in for ELA to help us in those areas, the pandram. And the Kirkland Consultants come in for math, um, to work with Ms. Cory B. For our junior high, they, because you're gonna see the scores, um, for that second benchmark, they scored very, very low. They did not perform their best, so we decided we'd change up their schedule, which they did not like. But after three weeks of changing schedules and we're going back in and we're re-teaching those skills. They decided, okay, let, give us that again. Let's show you what we really can do, and they honestly knew, they grew like a whole lot. So showing them and making sure that we're going back over the, the standards that they did not get well when we taught those sk- uh, those standards. Um, and retested them on those standards, just to make sure that we're covering everything, we're not leaving any gaps. Um, so we have, we're trying, working on student engagement in the junior high, working on that growth of the bottom twenty-five. Uh, for the seventh and eighth grade, we do a, we have to do a lot to motivate our seventh and eighth grade students. Um, not as much motivation for the lower elementary students because they, they want to make you happy and they like getting those incentives. Um, but of course, that seventy-eight grade group, you just, it's a hit or miss with them, just kind of depends on that. So we would love uh, having a, an interventionist just for that junior high so that we can see if we can hone in more. On those areas that they're all truly re- in. As you can see, we have our map twenty-four data, uh, where we were thirty points or more, uh, thirty-one points shy of a B. And our goal was, is to become a B this year, that's our goal. And we are working really, really hard, we dropped some. Um, when we know now where those areas are that we are lacking and we are focused in on those areas. So again, that's why we had to revamp schedules to make sure that we're teaching only the standards. And we're looking at those testing, those blueprints. Uh, making sure those teachers are hitting the standards that are weighted heavily. Um, reinforcing those more than the ones that are not weighted so lightly at the end. Because you may have some with thirteen, um, you have thirteen problems on there concerning that particular standard. But we go in and we work on those heavily tested items. Um, they always say we're not teaching to the test, but yeah, we are, we're teaching to them. And hopefully to fill in some of those gaps. Alright, so we're look, we've got our benchmark one data and when I want us to look at the data. Um, we're looking at benchmark to benchmark, but when we're doing our growth spreadsheet. We actually look at math data from the last year to with benchmarking. So what you're, what you see when you get other data, it's, it's gonna be scaled from math data of last year. Compared to benchmark data of this year. So I don't want anybody to think, okay, they're not growing yet. They're growing from benchmark to benchmark. It may not reflect it because we're looking at math data versus benchmark data. So that's gonna be, it's a big gap. So again, my benchmark data for two, this that we will be a F. And we are not a F school and I do not have F children. But when I come, when we came back, I, I, I let them know how I felt about that F and that we were gonna do better. Um, and this uh, benchmark, they did prove that they could do better. Um, because they didn't want those schedules to change again. But we are steadily working on those um, standards and the gaps that we need to fill. We are working on that with benchmark three. They have come up, my science looked great. Um, and I'm very, very proud because one of my science teachers is out, she has been out all year. And so I've had to ask another teacher to teach two grade lessons. So she has definitely stepped up to play and I do appreciate that for all of her hard work and not being upset by doing it. Um, so it takes a village to make this thing work. And it takes all of us working together. Um, so the teachers are working, they're working after school and they're working all the time, they're working hard. And so when you come in our building, we maybe, you know, we're gonna do different things, just like all the other schools are, we're having the Easter egg hunt and things. We will have some downtime after testing, you know, after it passes. But just know that we are working tremendously hard. If you happen to stop by, if you even, I tell you, you can't come in right now because we're testing, just know that we're just in the midst of testing. We do thank you all for the incentives, Mr. Marcus, we thank you. Um, we're giving out McDonald's gift cards to kids, we're doing any and everything that we can. In order to motivate them to do their very, very best, um, when it comes to state test. And it says, although this is a nerve-wracking time for our students. It is, it is our goal to earn a B and keep them calm and encourage both elementary and junior high students. We will have a strong finish. And we have provided incentives, a good, again, for the kindergartners and special breakfasts for elementary and junior high test takers. So we.
Thank you so much. Alright, if Ms. Cruz is online. She'll be behind you.
Good evening, I apologize for my inability to be there in person tonight to present Lawrence County High School's data. However, with the help of my AI avatar, I hope that this presentation is received in my app. First, let's begin with last year's accountability data in math matter. Proficiency was fifty-five percent, growth of all students was ninety-eight point four percent. And growth of the lowest performing students was one hundred percent. In ELA proficiency was forty point two percent, growth of all students was sixty-three point eight percent. And growth of the lowest performing students was sixty-seven point seven percent. Biology only receives a proficiency score which is divided in half. So the original score was fifty-four point five percent with twenty-seven point two five percent applied to the accountability model. The same is true for US history, which received an original score of forty-three point eight percent. That was divided to allow twenty-one point nine percent to count toward accountability. College and career readiness and acceleration combined for forty-five point seven five percent. And the graduation rate, which was eighty-two point five percent, was doubled to create a graduation rate score of a hundred and sixty-five percent. These percentages place Lawrence County High School at a B rating. It was our desire to improve upon these scores this year. However, due to some uncontrollable circumstances such as banked scores, which are scores from students that took the test last year, but won't count until this year. Graduation rate, which is always a year behind, and the replacement of teachers in some tested areas, we were unable to improve our scores. As a matter of fact, when we look at our current projections, which include banked scores from last year. And scores from state tests that were taken in December, we see that we are down across the board in math. Math proficiency declined from fifty-five percent to fifty-two percent. Growth of all students declined from ninety-eight point four percent to seventy-one percent. And growth of the lowest performing students declined from one hundred percent to seventy-seven percent. While we are pleased to see an uptick in ELA proficiency, growth of all declined from sixty-three point eight percent to forty-two percent. And growth of the lowest performing students declined from sixty-seven point seven percent to twenty-one percent. In biology, where we have a first-year biology teacher, proficiency declined from fifty-four point five percent to thirty-four percent. Which only applies seventeen percent to the accountability model. In US history, we see a small increase in proficiency from twenty-one point nine percent to twenty-five percent. College and career readiness and acceleration scores are calculated at the end of the year by the state. So we will use last year's scores there for a placeholder. However, graduation rate, which is based on last year's, graduation is down from eighty-two point five percent to eighty-one point two percent. Allowing for only one hundred and sixty-two point four percent to add to the accountability model. According to these projections, without the upcoming spring scores, Lawrence County High School is currently projected to be at a D level, eighteen points from a level C. The first step in understanding how to improve the situation is understanding what factors led to its decline. First and foremost, graduation rate is a banked score based solely on graduation from the previous year. There is nothing that could have been done or put in place this year to control the graduation rate that will apply to this year's accountability. Next, banked scores. Scores can be banked in the areas of Algebra I and Biology I. This means that if students take these courses and the state test prior to their tenth grade year. Their scores are banked and are only applied to accountability once those students become tenth graders. If these students did not score well on their state test, their scores could have a large impact on the upcoming accountability scores. Finally, when a tenured teacher is replaced with a novice teacher in a tested area, there is often a period of that teacher having to figure things out. We experienced that this year in biology. Also, the high school has seen an influx of students that are entering its freshman at higher levels. For teachers that are tenured, when students come to the high school at higher levels than they have come to the high school with before. Teachers have to adjust their teaching styles to meet those students where they are. Consultants are being used to help the teachers with this adjustment. Luckily, the prior projections for the current school year did not include the upcoming spring testing. Each year, our district relies on benchmark data to give us a projection of how our students will perform on state tests. At the last scheduled benchmark, which projects spring scores, math was showing thirty-two point six percent proficiency. Fifty-seven point eight percent growth of all students and ninety-four point six percent growth of the lowest performing students. ELA was showing sixty-two point three percent proficiency with sixty-two point five percent growth of all students. And thirty-eight point five percent growth of the lowest performing students. Biology was showing twenty-three percent proficiency, allowing for eleven point five percent to apply to the accountability model. US history showed fifty-five percent proficiency with twenty-seven point five percent applicable to the accountability model. We used the same college and career readiness and acceleration scores and added the new banked graduation rate of eighty-one point two percent. Allowing for a hundred and sixty-two point four percent to count toward accountability. If only the second semester spring students were testing, Lawrence County High School would land at a score of five ninety-five point forty-five, which is a C. It was an improvement from the fall data. It is our projection that once students test this spring, Lawrence County High School will be rated a level C. When we take a look at the students that tested this year whose scores were banked until they become tenth graders. We see that there is an uptick in both math and biology proficiency. Math proficiency improved twenty-one percent when compared to current projections. And biology proficiency. And biology proficiency improved eight percent when compared to this year's proficiency. Combined, these scores yield a twenty-nine percent improvement from current projections. I'm sure you are wondering, what are we doing now to make improvement where we see deficiency? Well, we are doing several things. Foundations to Algebra and Algebra I teachers worked with the Kirkland group during the first semester to help novice and tenured teachers with their individual needs. The Harvard Foundation is working with ELA. Foundations to Biology and Biology I teachers to assist them in providing students with the depth of information that they need to be successful. We have contracted outside sources to come in and tutor our students who have struggled to pass their state test or need help with the ACT. Students have been provided tutoring and a boot camp to help with US history test preparation. Students are being offered more opportunities to take AP and dual enrollment classes to increase our participation in college and career readiness work and increase our acceleration piece of the accountability model. We also realize that we have a lot that we need to fix. So we are focusing on increasing growth for all students in both math and ELA and increasing our proficiency in biology. We have been told that students will not test for US history next year. So we are just waiting on the official word from the state before we decide if we need to add US history to our focus list. Additionally, we want to increase our graduation rate. So how are we going to make those improvements? To improve our graduation rate, we want to offer students more opportunities to graduate early by closely monitoring their schedules to ensure the classes they need for graduation are a priority. We also want to provide our senior students with a more flexible schedule by offering options of both a late start to the school day or an early release from the school day. Additionally, we want to provide teachers with the necessary professional development during the summer months so that they will be better prepared to meet the needs of the students once school starts, instead of waiting until school starts to give them guidance. However, we also want them to have support from consultants during the school year. The counselors have taken a strong stand in placing students in classes that will help them to be successful and that will provide them with the necessary skills and knowledge to be successful on state tests. Finally, we are working hard to get schedules aligned that will allow Tier Two and Tier Three students to have access to interventions through the MTSS process all year, which has been almost impossible at the high school level in the past due to the format of the four-by-four block schedule. It is our ultimate desire to grow Lawrence County High School to an A-rated school. We believe that once we get some vital pieces in place, we will be able to do just that. Thank you for your continued support of our efforts at Lawrence County High School. And thank you for listening to this AI-assisted presentation. Bridges will be available to answer any additional questions that you may have at a later date.
Well, I'm thoroughly impressed. Alright, Ms. Madison with the presentation of the benchmark data.
Evening everyone. Y'all, I can hear the word percent one more time. Just one, I got a couple thousand. Any numbers? So for the sake of time, I can just give you a brief synopsis of what we're looking like as a district when it comes to our benchmark efficiency projections. Um on the first page, you see ELA. Basically, in comparison to last year, um we've increased in ELA in all grades except for first, fourth, and seventh grade and we stayed the same. I mean, seventh grade. And uh we stayed the same in one grade there. For math, um we kind of decreased as a district in math. Um the only grades that we did decrease in is fifth and sixth and we stayed the same in grade eight as last year. And at our high school, um we increased in the ELA and um we decreased in math, biology, and US history. Are there any questions?
Before we move on, I just want to say quickly, as a, a parent of a top of children in this school district and a former employee of the school district, people have absolutely no clue how hard these administrators and teachers and kids work, how stressful it is for these children, how, you know, all people tell other schools that don't have any standardized testing at all. Not every kid tests well, that does not mean they're not getting the education that they deserve. You know, my, my kindergartner started kind of new with ABCs and he is now reading. So I know my children get a good education. I could not be prouder from them to go to this school district. And I could not be prouder of all the hard work and all that administrators, teachers, parents, everybody puts into it. Cause I've seen firsthand, it ain't, it ain't easy. Alright, number eleven, uh superintendent comments.
Alright, before I say anything else, let me say, poor Brooklyn, she's been sitting up here front and center. Listening to all this data, I should have moved her, moved that up. Or we should have done it before we started, but we didn't. Anyway, we're gonna recognize, is any other students here by the way? Then for this top four, alright. Uh Brooklyn had the top reading score in fifth grade last year for Copica Tilton, tenant center. She's here, so we've got her gift certificates. Uh for MES, which students are Rod Page now, Jacob Dear, and uh New Hebron with Miley McGee. But Brooklyn come up and we'll give you your certificates, your badges, your stuff, get up. Uh we're gonna check, do a picture, real quick. I saw her. Gotta sleep in a few minutes.
Y'all might have to let Cousin Town pick the dress.
Behind, behind.
I'm gonna get behind you, Jean. Should have come over from your way. Got to pop me out, dog.
Yeah, y'all don't have to wait the whole thing.
And uh principal, unless you want to tell you, free to go.
Yep.
Uh I know you're thinking, you're gonna go work on your avatar for next time. I wish I'd have had one of those. Thomas Bridges, after I saw it, I said, I need to know where you got that avatar, cause I'm gonna have one for whatever.
I don't know how you even go there.
Miss Craven, we're gonna get you one, we can get you an avatar.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Alright, enrollment right now is sixteen hundred and thirty. Last month it was sixteen hundred and thirty-seven. Average daily attendance is ninety point eight six. Uh teacher attendance is still at ninety-eight percent, which is great for testing. You know, I've worked in districts where it starts to all of a sudden get sick around testing time. Uh luckily, we haven't run into that problem because it's, you're on your feet for tests or how long, Ms. Madison? Three hours. And you can't just be in there just daydreaming. You gotta be on point, watching the students, what they're doing, making sure they're not cheating or all kinds of things like that. So it's a, it's a labor-intensive time of the year for teachers and other staff members. So to beat ninety-eight percent is an awesome thing. Student discipline, Rod Page, fourteen, MES, ten. Uh Lawrence County High School, thirteen, New Hebron, five, Copica Tilton, thirteen. That's another thing you see at this time of the year, usually discipline goes up. Right now, we're holding, I think Ms. Thomas said, we can expect it to go up. And we'll probably see it go up in all of our buildings, uh clean down the next board meeting. Alright, several things I wanna go over with you. First of all, I wanna talk about doing a work session. Do you wanna go over that now, possible dates and times when y'all might can do that? Uh are there any times or dates or days of the week, I should say, that you know you can do? So I can mark those out.
I work Thursdays and Fridays.
So no Thursday and Friday, Ms. Fairborn, any other days?
No Monday.
No Monday for Dr. Bridges. So Monday, Thursday, and Friday are out. Tuesday and Wednesday.
Those are those families.
Alright, any time of the day. I think we talked about maybe doing it around lunchtime at one of the buildings. We could eat lunch and do the work session. Uh eleven o'clock.
Maybe like one o'clock?
One o'clock?
Or twelve-thirty-ish? Yeah. Yeah, we don't have that thing, just like twelve-thirty-one would probably work better for me.
Okay.
If you wanna please, I'm not gonna turn down things.
Well, in case we decide to eat, you wanna say twelve-thirty?
That'll work.
Alright, now, do you wanna do this next week or the week, the following week?
Oh.
Next week, we're gonna be shorter day for uh correct?
Yeah.
Good Monday.
We're visiting a location, we're visiting the campus.
Uh yeah, we can walk the campus too. Uh I think, I talked to Ms., when we were discussing lunch, talked to Ms. Hawthorne. We were gonna look at Rod Page for the first meeting. Uh and then we'll rotate it as we go. That way you can go ahead and do your tour of that campus. And I got some other things that I wanna bring into the work session concerning Rod Page, so that, that's appropriate.
Okay.
Alright.
Will they, will they be testing?
When did she, I was just about to listen when she said they were testing.
I'll check on that, they should be done by.
By twenty-nine.
Is that what she's talking, so they won't be in testing yet?
Yeah, the twenty-ninth, April twenty-ninth is when they're starting, so next week would probably be better.
Okay.
Um I, well, whatever she thinks.
This is Tuesday and Wednesday, do you wanna say Wednesday?
That'll work.
Wednesday.
Wednesday at twelve-thirty. How am I gonna put it in here, I'll forget about it.
Yeah, me too.
Alright. A few things I know that we're gonna wanna talk about, I brought, I gave you the organizational charts. That's what I could find that were readily available online. Um some bigger districts and some smaller. It's just an example to go by. Of course, you know what our organizational chart looks like as a starting point. But uh that's something I wanna put on there. Also, the uh the foundational problems with Rod Page, we know that's been an issue for a long time in the district. Uh Coach Hooker and I met with some engineers who came in and looked at that whole property and gave me an assessment of what they could do to look at. I was, I, I was not here when they were first looked at, so I don't really know what we're dealing with. Uh I'd like to take a fresh look at it. And I'll leave that for there then, but be prepared to talk about that because I've got some, some insight on that. If anything else you wanna discuss, bring that with you. Alright, if anything comes up, clean down and then we'll discuss it at that time. Alright.
This may be out of the notice, but we came out and then we found out where the ball was dropped before your time. Cause we met at Rod Page with that foundational problem.
Yes.
And it was supposed to be waterproof and gone.
Yes.
If you don't mind.
I will absolutely look into that. Uh Coach Hooker and I have made a lot of our conversations.
That was before us. I remember seeing it in the paper, like, and that was, it was before we were on the board.
I know that, problems don't just go away because you ignore them.
No, they don't.
And that's been a problem and um so long come here, I wanna make it a priority to get on top of that.
Yeah.
Um, okay, some other things. Board members, check your emails, Ms. Shelley sent a date, sent an email about some dates, uh MSBA training dates, uh upcoming. I don't know what they are, but they send your emails, just checking if you're interested. I think Ms. Fairborn's going to one or two of them. If you wanna go let Ms. Shelley know, she can make arrangements for you. Also, please remember to go onto the Mississippi Ethics Commission website, complete the State of Economic Interest. That's due by May the first. We have to have that done because uh if you haven't done so already.
I, I was thinking I had done that, that's what I was thinking, did we do that this year?
If it could possibly, it could be an accreditation violation if we don't get it done by May the first, so call Ms. Shelley if you need assistance with that. Alright. What she sent?
She did, I was bored to tears.
Okay. Alright, graduation will take place before we meet again, that's Friday, May the sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. I believe it starts at seven o'clock, I'll double check. Uh so please come out and help us recognize class twenty twenty-five. The next board meeting is scheduled for May the nineteenth, and we will review Section D on financials. Do you have any questions for me?
No, sir, thank you, sir. Sixteen thirty.
I just did the district, sixteen hundred and thirty, it was sixteen thirty-seven last week.
Thank you, sir. Alright, and then um I'm gonna read a little something. It says, whereas the Board of Trustees and Superintendent recognize the exceptional contributions of the administrative assistants and board clerks whose commitment, skill, and dedication service be foundation for effective district leadership and governance. And whereas this individual plays a critical role in smooth operation of the school board and superintendent's office, coordinating meetings, preparing agendas, maintaining official records, and ensuring that the work of the district is conducted with precision and professionalism. And whereas the responsibilities of the administrative assistant and board clerk require high-level organization, organizational skill, attention to detail, confidentiality, and the ability to manage multiple priorities with poise and efficiency. Whereas this professional, this professional often goes above and beyond working long hours and responding to complex needs, all while supporting the board, superintendent, staff, and public bracing to film the flexibility. And whereas the impact of this work is felt daily in the smooth functioning of the school district, the integrity of the board process, and the confidence of the leadership team. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Board of Trustees and the Superintendent of Lawrence County School District, proudly recognize the week of April twentieth through the twenty-sixth as Administrative Assistance and Board Clerk Appreciation Week and express deepest gratitude to the district's administrative assistant and board clerk for the vital work performed in service to the school district in the. So, Michelle, we got you a little, a little pic.
Very important job.
Oh, oh, hang on. No. You can, you can take a picture like I'm.
If you, if you miss the sweater, I have another one in the car.
She showed the date, Kelsey gave it to me. Alright, number twelve. So it's gonna be consent agenda, one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. That's it.
I don't like the lotion.
Moved by Ms. Fairborn?
Sure.
Taken by Dr. Dr. Bridges. Alright, let's vote. Bye-bye. Alright, now twelve eleven will be what was twelve-two. So about the leadership group.
Our move?
Moved by Dr. Bridges? Taken by Ms. Peyton, discussion.
Uh I, I asked to uh to pull this item and I would like to request that it be tabled. Uh Mr. Barron, as well as Ms. Ha, Ms. Hathorne, sent uh, sent me a lot of information and I did try to work through it and read through it. But uh I, it's just a lot of information. Uh this is a, a very large expenditure for professional development and I, I would just like to request that it be tabled. Maybe a discussion for our work session and uh something that we can vote on in our May meeting.
Not, not, I'm trying to think. We moved on it and we seconded it, but she wants to table it.
So we just moved the table and had to express it?
So we're gonna change the move?
Yeah, we just moved.
Move it to, okay, okay. So move the table, the twelve-two approval of the leadership group to a later date.
So, so you wanna try, you wanna try to approve it in May? So, 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 so I think we did this last year, I understand that's a big, big expense, so um this isn't Ms. Karen's budget, right? So if this isn't our budget, I don't see why we gotta shoot out the table of it. I mean, it's, it's just for training, right?
It is for training.
So if it's for training, then I think she got some new people, I think they need to be trained. Uh I don't think they just need to be left out in the woods and just, hey, get it by yourself. I understand where you're coming from, Ms. Craven, but I think if we go ahead and get this done now, we won't have to wait till May and we just, the price may change, it may, if we don't go ahead and approve this. I think if it's in Ms. Karen's budget, I think we should go ahead and approve it.
I don't think the price will change if they move the contract. And, and we also have a fiduciary responsibility to, to look at large expenditures like Ms. Fairborn is requesting, so uh I don't know when this training is supposed to take place, but if it's next year, we got to June thirtieth to uh, to get it inside the budget.
It's, it's early June, I believe, isn't that correct?
We still have, we still have May, we still have the May meeting. For what it's worth, I'm, I'm, I'm with table.
Oh, I have a, the thing with table, I get it, I get it.
Oh, I have a, the thing with table, I get, I get it, but it's right, are we gonna go through everybody's line at home and, you know, tell them how to spend their money, spend their budget, I guess, with my, my, but...
Maybe we should. What is our job?
Cause we, we, we pay a whole lot of money to those Kirkland folks and teach our teachers to do this and do that, and, you know.
We should check on that?
Yeah, we, we, we.
You know what I mean?
Yes, we spend a lot of money on, uh, a lot of stuff, and I think we should, if we're gonna evaluate twenty, uh, price here, I think we should evaluate all of them, if we're gonna evaluate just, this amount from Ms. Karen, I think.
If it was eight thousand, I don't see the problem with, with Ms. Fairburn going through it. Especially as a former educator, thirty plus years, I don't see a problem with going through it, with applying to go and just give it a little bit more time. I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
That, that was...
She's not saying no, she's saying...
Well, that, that was my request to, uh, it does, you know, I will, uh, I will vote my...
Absolutely.
Make my vote, vote my conscience, and then move, move forward, so that is...
So we table it or?
Ms. Was moved to table.
I moved to table.
I second. Yeah, whenever, whenever, whenever we do discuss it.
I'll file.
The movement to just table it, and then look at it, vote on it next month, or... Uh, Kenny wrote on some of the work sessions, no?
No.
No, so next month.
It has to be a special meeting.
It has to be.
All right, if we so-called a special meeting, right. Okay, so I moved to table it.
I second.
And, and Dr. Bridges seconded, so we're gonna vote on just to table it. I got both of those? Okay, everybody knows? So three yeas, one nay. All right, now the next one is number, it's gonna be twelve twelve, but it was the one that was twelve ten about the coaches' supplement scale.
I move.
And I'll second.
Moved by Dr. Bridges and seconded by Ms. Fairburn.
Yeah, Ms. Chair, my question was, um, I already said major sports, and then highlighted was only, um, the athletic director. Does that mean that's the only two that didn't change?
No, sir, what it is, that's how my own spreadsheet was.
The major sports, uh, for us, like the assistant, um, the assistant coaches, for the major sports, it gets, instead of five days,
we just make, try to make it fair across the board, where everybody gets ten days. So the athletic director, it didn't change.
It didn't change, okay, so what, of course I heard it. When you say minor sports, did that, did that include an uptick in cheerleading and, and assistant cheerleaders? Or just you can specifically ask for?
They just asked for the major sports.
Major sports.
Yes, sir.
So junior, uh, junior high is, is included in that?
Yes, sir, junior high is included, not the days before, it's like a track. We try, um, from five hundred, cause we're behind. I've been researching, I think it gets behind, so instead of five hundred, we moved it to try to lower that.
Yeah, it's, it's the lowest paid junior high, uh, sport.
Okay, so, so, okay, I, I got that, so, Ms. Baron, have you replaced the co-athletic director?
It's on there to be approved, it's on the agenda to be approved today.
Okay, and so, in the highlighted area, one had forty-three yesterday, and one had twenty-five.
I, I have a question about that too, I was trying to...
He's a football coach, and so they get those forty-three additional days.
But they each get five thousand, each one working more days, one, I just did, I didn't agree with it last year. What was your question, Mr.?
Uh, well, I did, I was trying to pull that up, but, uh, probably so. Oh, I think I found it.
You found it, yeah, that's it.
Okay, so, that, that was one of my questions on the, uh, co-athletic coordinator. Countywide, it was twenty thousand, it was twenty days at five thousand dollars. And then the countywide other coa, co-uh, coordinator was forty-three days. But now, but now the head coach gets, it's, right, the head coach gets twenty-three. Head football coach gets twenty-three days on the scale.
Is the forty-three just the athletic director plus the head coach? It's not, it's, they're both getting the same amount of money for twenty-nine thirty, and the, the other twenty-three is because he's the head football coach.
But that, but that is misleading, that is misleading, because you have, you have a head football coach...
And we have a head, another head coach, then we already have that fourth pool, that's him being a head coach, and then him coming in and co-athletic director.
Okay, well, that, that was one of my questions, and, and I, I just actually have a comment, I, uh, I, I just, I under, you know, we, we have... I'm new, Ms. Virginia's new, we're, we're in a, we're in the budget season, as, as well as, uh, try, as well as testing season. So, so my question is, uh, I'm not even sure that we've gotten an allocation from the state yet, and, uh, so...
But, um, federal has nothing to do with our, what we get.
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not talking about federal, so we have gotten our state allocation?
We have, but it's not been finalized, because we haven't held back.
Well, I...
But I'm not gonna throw the district behind or let them get, that's my job to make sure our money is spent right.
Well, uh, you know, my, my request or, or my thoughts were maybe to, uh, to hold off on the, on approving this particular, uh, salary scale or supplement scale until we get, until we get our other matters in order. But if they're in order, uh, that's okay, but I, I just, uh, you know, I've, I've heard through the grapevine that we're taking cuts, what have you, and I just wanna make sure that our instructional programs are, uh, are where they need to be before we, before we move to, uh, making changes with our salary, our sal, supplements for our coaches and activities.
I wanna put that before the board.
I think the overall increase is something right around three thousand, is that correct?
Especially with the junior high.
Yeah, so, just to give you an overall view of it, it's not a tremendous call.
And I, I did have, well, I did have one question, because, uh, at the end of both this year's supplement scale and the, the new scale that's, uh, requesting approval, there's like a ten thousand dollars difference, because all of this is totaled up. Now, uh, I suppose that's, now, tho, those daily rates, is that going to be based on experience? Or is that just a flat daily rate?
It's a flat daily rate.
And what, what is that daily rate?
That's their daily rate of, uh...
It's their individual daily rate.
Right, so it's an individual rate?
Yes, I'm sorry, I just understood.
Okay, okay, well, tho, those were the questions I had.
So, Mr. Baron, that director, co-director was before your time, you still on board with that?
No, that was before my, uh...
Once you, you have a chance to look at it?
Yes, well, I don't know exactly the days, you're talking about the discrepancy there, but I'm gonna look at it.
But do we need a co, do we need two athletic directors?
If they're gonna teach us to, to handle the, uh, the, the responsibilities that come with that, because I think, the way it's set up, the way it was set up with Coach McDuffie and Coach Palmer, he handled the outside facilities, things like that, he did a good job with it, and Coach McDuffie mainly handled scheduling, the, uh, administrative paperwork side of it. It's worked well, it works for me as superintendent, now, ultimately decisions of the board, uh, but I recommend staying with what we got, I think it's working well.
I think there's a lot of evidence that it's worked, and the other athletic director did not teach. And I think that is a huge difference. If you're asking people to teach, especially if you're asking them to teach in tested areas, then it, to me, it makes perfect sense to have more than one person doing the job.
So the athletic teacher, I'm gonna call, I mean, he taught last year, audition?
Yes.
You before, ma?
Yes.
When he was coaching football, or he did with state test, that might have been before your time.
Yeah, I know.
He didn't do nothing but walk around. I'm just saying, if we gonna pull out with a knowledge, he didn't do nothing but walk around and state testing. So, but when, when that, he resigned, uh, in December, but when he was doing it became a problem. You gotta be careful when we started pulling that technicality. I personally don't think a five thousand dollars supplement is warrant, a piece for two athletic directors. And other districts are working with more, and they're bigger than L C. We put a lot of emphasis on athletics, which is great, Friday night lights, which I love, academia should always be first. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
And, and I, I do want to comment one more time, I, 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 my, my, my husband says that, I don't know when to stop, but... Uh, the, the forty-three additional days for the second co-athletic coordinator, all of our head coaches have twenty-three days, uh, additional days. You've got twenty days, uh, for one coordinator, and you have forty-three for the other. And you take your, the current, uh, coordinator, she has twenty-three days, and, uh, when you add that other, it's forty-three days. The head football coach has twenty-three days. When you add, uh, the, the other co-coordinator, that is sixty-six days, when I'm looking at it. I mean, is that correct?
That's not what, not a last year what it is, she's looking at her days, the twenty days, that's including the forty-three days between his twenty-three days plus the twenty days that the athletic coordinator needs.
How many days?
Nothing changed, it's just like, it's last year.
The athletic director gets how many days? Twenty?
Twenty.
And then their, their days, as a head coach?
It made no two thirty for the whole year, but yeah.
So they each get forty-three days, no?
Yeah, cause she's the head basketball coach, so yeah, they would both get, you, you get twenty for the athletic director, so you get twenty-three for the head coach.
You're just saying that the, the supplement schedule looks misleading?
It, it's, it's misleading to me.
I understand, I think I understand what you're saying, uh, but you're not opposed to the forty-three overall, or, or you?
I, one, well, I'm, I'm, I will, I will be voting nay tonight, so, uh, but, uh...
But right now, you're trying to understand the schedule, okay, I just wanna make sure I understand.
Maybe just changing that co-athletic director where they both say twenty, and then it just so happens that they're both head coaches of the sport, so they get the additional twenty-three, but, I mean, I mean, we could just change that to where they both say twenty, but it's not misleading.
So the, so the current coordinator got forty-three days.
Because she's the head coach and the athletic director, and the teacher.
Yeah, I like to view it separately, she gets twenty days for co-athletic director.
And J, and, the other athletic director isn't a head coach, so he got twenty. He got twenty, she had forty-three, cause she was the head coach and the athletic director.
Okay.
And he made five K for twenty days.
Right.
Right.
But anyway, I, I, I have no further questions.
Any other discussion?
I got a problem, because I wanna vote yea, because some of these junior high get supplemented, but I don't like, I still don't like the co-athletic director.
Well, we all got decisions we gotta make, so, all right, I move to approve the revised coaching supplement scale for twenty-five, twenty-six.
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Peyton, let's vote.
Quarter of order, we don't want you to vote.
It was.
Oh, well, my bad, we already did it.
She's asking, could she, could she vote on that?
Can she?
She can, because, well...
Cause her daughter is one.
Uh, she cannot vote. No, she can't, because if it's a coaches' supplement, and her daughter is coach, then she won't be able to vote on the supplement now. The other supplement, I love, the other supplement, she can vote on, just not Candace's.
Yeah, I feel like they're a little, those are separate, I spoke to Ms., um, Ashley, she has the numbers on the ones that Ms. Fairburn has to recuse herself from, and this was...
Yeah, I, it's that's for her to be the coach, and to be a teacher, but I don't know for, on the coaching supplement.
There's two ways we can do it, she can accuse us, we can separate it and have the, the athletic director's bottom set up and do the rest. She can vote on the rest, or she can accuse herself on this.
But, but isn't, isn't this just a scale?
This is a revise, you're only voting on the revisment, so she can vote on that, because nothing's changing with the, with her...
But it's, it's really what it, I, I know, I know Ms. Virginia's like me, that was something that was, and that was pounded into us during our training.
Yeah, yeah, they definitely did.
So if she, you know, if she feels more comfortable accusing herself, it probably won't matter, but, I mean, she wants to, but I think it's a scale.
Right, we're voting on the scale.
And, and I, I don't think she has to accuse on this one.
And it doesn't have to do, whoever, if her daughter's the coach or not, the scale has to be approved for this part, so, okay.
That's what I, 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 I think it's okay.
I think this one's okay.
It's whatever you decide.
Cause it's a scale whether your kid's coached or not. Okay, so, we've moved on it twice, so let's vote on it now. All those in favor of approving the coaching supplement scale, right, right? All right.
Hold on, okay.
We're, we're voting on supplement that I moved on, she's trying to get through it.
Right, ignore the second, yeah, ignore the second. I forgot we had moved on it. So, we're voting. All those in favor, three yeas and two nays. All right, now consent agenda thirteen ones. It's thirteen ten six, am, am I right that they can both vote on these?
Thirteen one through ten six.
Thirteen ten six, I'm pretty sure, cause we have four prior. We have, okay, so, uh, consent agenda for thirteen one through thirteen ten six.
Is the co-athletic director on it?
No.
No.
No, that's gonna be under... It's gonna be under...
They're fifteen or...
Is it, I think it's seventeen, hang on, let me make sure.
Yes, that's separated, it does.
Let me, is it seventeen?
All right, so we...
Moved by Dr. Bridges, seconded by Ms. Fairburn, let's vote. Bye-bye. All right, number, now fourteen is the one that you have to approve, recuse yourself, Ms., um, Ms. McDuffie. So, for fourteen one through fourteen five, so, Ms. McDuffie's gonna recuse herself.
Even just stand in the hall.
All right. I'll move on fourteen one through fourteen five.
No.
Seconded by Mr. Peyton, let's vote. Four oh. All right, you can go back, Ms. Virginia. Did she hear me? Yeah, yeah, she, she had nothing. I'll wait.
But now she's probably gonna have to stay out for this one, she'll show her, yeah, she...
Does she have to stay up?
I think so.
It's fourteen and seventeen, I have her doing rehearsals, it's fifteen, no, I don't think, let me make sure.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, let me double check, cause I don't, I think fifteen, but let me, hang on. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, she, yeah.
Everybody's good to vote on this one. All right, so, no, item number fifteen.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Fairburn moved, seconded by Mr. Peyton, let's vote. Bye-bye on that one. All right, number sixteen, this is the one Ms. Tammy has to recuse herself on. So, uh, if, if anybody's wondering if those are children that work in, or relatives that work in the district, there's nothing there's going on. So, number sixteen, I'll move, seconded by Mr. Peyton, let's vote, four oh. All right, Ms. Tammy. Switch. Yeah. It's what you get in a small town when everybody's related tonight. All right, number seventeen, all right, move, but this is, like, this is the one with the athletic director on it too.
Oh, okay.
Well, I mean, you can still move, he moved, seconded by Mr. Peyton, all right, let's vote.
Uh, who's, who's, who's the direct, coach, football coach?
And Candace, yeah.
Okay.
All right, number seventeen, uh, would we move? I'm confusing myself, let's vote. Three yeas, one nay. All right, Ms. Virginia, now Ms. Tammy, you go switch. All right, number eighteen, moved by Dr. Bridges, seconded by Mr. Peyton, let's vote, four oh. All right, Ms. Tammy, you can come back. All right, nineteen, request review and approval of policy J C D A F.
I move.
I second.
Moved by Dr. Bridges, seconded by Mr. Peyton.
Is this new?
Yes, so I think it's changed.
It's new or changed?
It's newer changed.
Uh, the cell phone policy, I recommend it changes. Do we go through it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, the current policy is kind of widespread, it's, uh, possession of cell phone complicated three, up to three hundred and sixty-five days, I felt like... possession of cell phone confiscated three, up to three hundred and sixty-five days, which I felt like a little, little, it's not consistent, because you're gonna have somebody keep twenty days, so keep it for three hundred and sixty-five days. This is a ladder that, uh, that escalates with time, and it gives parents an option, and it's only an option to pay a fee to get the phone back, or, it's not a popular thing, they don't like it, because they say, well, I'm having to pay twice for it, they're actually not, because if the child leaves the phone home and doesn't get it confiscated, then there's no fee required, and any fee collected goes straight to the student activity fund that is designed, student incentives, uh, it's gotta be used for students. We use this in both districts, which I've worked in previously. It was a good way for fees to raise funds for students, but it's not popular, uh, but nothing dealing with cell phones is popular.
Right.
Uh, and I understand parents want their students, want their children to have cell phones, it gives them a feeling of safety, but students, in a lot of cases, won't just leave them put away like we asked them to, or turned off, and that's where the dilemma comes in, uh, there's lots of reasons not to have a cell phone at school. There are safety issues, safety concerns, uh, they can get stolen, takes away manpower on campus to go and look for them, if the principal will look for them, a lot of times, they won't, because they're not supposed to have them. I had a student, uh, that walked off campus and got picked up, not in this district, but got picked up by somebody, because they made arrangements with their cell phone, they meet me out here by this, this sign, and luckily, they ended up sheriff's office, but we may not be so lucky in some cases, that don't mean they can't do it without a cell phone, but that's a tool they can use to do the various things that we don't want to do. So, I think this policy is better than what we currently have, so, that's my recommendation. I think I went through all of it, but the, the, uh, the escalation is first depends, that it's confiscated for ten days, second twenty, it's just an increment of ten, and, uh, the phone, the fee is increments of twenty-five, now, my son gets a phone taken, he just gets his phone taken, I told Mr. Murphy that today when I talked to him, I'm not paying twenty-five or a hundred dollars or any fee to get it back. He knows how to get it out, it's just taken off. Uh, but I have worked in districts where parents get out that hundred dollar bill and pay up, get their, the phone back. I don't have that kind of money, but, uh, it's their prerogative.
Pretty strong, watches, anything smart?
Uh, I believe so, but.
Yeah. It does include, it's including but not limited to smartwatches, headphones, or other secondary devices.
Yeah, it wouldn't apply to school issue devices.
Which usually, you know, your wives or, I mean, they'll tell you you can use it or whatever, but, I'm, I'm sure it mostly pertains to cell phones. Any other questions? No, all right, let's vote on it. Five votes. All right, uh, number twenty, executive session.
I move, we're going through.
Second by Mr. Peyton, y'all have a great night, or, wait. But. All right, in executive session, we accepted the superintendent's recommendation on the student transfer.
I'm moving to turn, Mr. Chair.
I second, let's vote, I vote, y'all have a blessed night.
I'm going, ready.